Saw your email to George. Saw John's email to you.
And you saw my correction.
Your second email to George. How the hell can he write the email without that qualification? I, geez.
Well, he'd already proposed that.
Right? Okay, we're gonna get started.
In my defense, I kinda thought that it was still on the table.
Yeah.
What did you kind of yourself now?
We're gonna open up the planning board for July 12th. It's 7:05 and we're ready to get started. So our first item on the agenda, just a reminder that the show tonight is audiotaped and videotaped for folks at home. You will have to use the microphone and identify yourself so people on cable can hear. So we're gonna get started right away with the 95 Park Street and assume you're here for that? Great.
I am Jim from Endless Energy. At the previous hearing, there's only one or two issues pending. One was the conservation approval that this had a negative impact, which was issued by Janet on the 20th stating that there would be no negative impact of the installation of this solar. There was one concern of the location of the trench from the solar array to the house, which we have relocated.
Per Janet.
The second issue was planting of shrubbery on the north and west section of the ground array to hide the nuisance of the backside of the solar panels and the racking system, which I have put on the plot plan showing the proposed installation of the shrubbery. And we also are proposing green fence screening with the customer's request to hide the back of the panels and the racking as well.
That's a nice looking fence. What's it made out of?
It's a...
I don't even know what we're gonna be using on that.
It's just a proposed screen for the fence.
Like scrim, like they would use in a construction site?
Exactly.
scrim?
Yeah.
And you'll make it green?
Yes.
Be the color green?
It's like a woven fabric?
Yeah, so you ever go on a construction site around scaffolding along the base, they have that sort of fabric, they call that scrim. And you can put graphics on it, you can make it whatever color you want and...
Is that over a chain link fence?
No, no, the chain link fence is gonna be out from the array. This is just gonna be off the backside of the panels.
Ah, the backside of the panels, okay. Yeah, 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 okay, fair enough.
Using the framework.
This isn't to meet the code by the building commissioner?
Yeah, okay, I thought it was the fence. I understand what you're doing, yeah, okay.
So there's additionally a fence in addition to this?
Yes, yes, it's still proposed on the plan.
I honestly don't remember the trench last time that we met. Can you explain to me where the trench is and what the purpose of it is?
The trench is to run the electrical circuits from the solar array to the interconnection point. We proposed it at the end of the driveway on the east section and to go to the back of the house to eliminate cutting through the driveway.
And is it an open trench or do you bury it underground?
It will be a buried trench, but will be disturbing the ground within the 100-foot buffer of the preservation.
I see, okay.
It was right at the border of 100 feet. So she said if I was to put it there, Janet was, said if I was to put it there, I would have to do RDA.
You took her advice and avoided the conservation commission?
Yes.
So where was the trench initially? It was, are you cutting the driving out to put the trench in?
No, we are, yes.
He said it was along the backside of the driveway.
Really? And you're making you cut the driveway?
Yes.
I think that's kinda... Well, it says that, the letter says that it's a existing crack and...
Well, it is only a crack that could be sealed and repaired, but I'm gonna utilize that crack and cut another line.
Yeah.
And then patch it in and seal it.
So how wide's the trench?
12 inches.
Yeah, okay.
And then have you gotten into any details of what kind of landscaping in the area that you propose? What kind of shrubs, types, varieties?
No, we did not. Any kind of evergreen, low growing.
Right here. Long edge there. Where's it gonna be?
So other than the two issues, was there anything else that would be pending?
Do we get a setup of where the shrubs are?
So it looks like on, all we're seeing is on this, showing on the north and west sides, if north is up, is that, is that correct?
What's that?
The shrubbery location is on the north and west sides of the array?
Correct. That's what you recommended?
Yep.
Or required from the street view and from the north neighbor?
The neighbors, yep.
Do we have any shrubs to recommend, Ray?
I do not.
Okay.
They're suggesting a low growing shrub, evergreen. Do you guys have an idea as to what you're looking for?
The homeowners here, if you would like to input.
Hi, I'm Tom Ryan. We haven't decided yet, but you know, best I could tell you is that characterization of low growing evergreen.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not a shrub person, but my wife would have some input into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, anybody? Anything else?
No, we've been through this a couple of times, so I think we got them wrung out.
Yeah. Yeah, I think hearing from conservation was very helpful and then definitely with the... So I guess one other thing, describe the fencing, because you've described the screening, but where is the, where is the fencing located? I'm having a hard time understanding on the plan.
It was...
Can you see?
Do you saw the original packet?
We don't.
Oh.
Yeah, it's great.
I might have it as well.
But I believe this fencing was a building requirement, right? Not a planning board?
It's the electrical code.
Yes.
Did you check with the commissioner on that?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm just saying.
It's a green line around, it's the electrical code.
Oh, that's right, yeah, proposed fence. So just wraps all the way around all four sides?
This is what you're referring to in terms of the fence?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Right. Just a green, at the moment it's just a green line indicating that you're gonna put a fence up.
A fence to meet to any...
There's no exact dimensions, but the idea is to capture the entirety of the array, right?
Correct.
Yeah. All right, I don't, I think if we don't have any other questions or comments, we could move to close the hearing if that is acceptable to you.
That would be great.
Move to close the public hearing?
Yep.
For 95 Park Street. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we will just need to draft up a decision, right? So then we'll be able to vote on the actual decision with all of sort of the details that go behind it in the paperwork.
Okay. And once you vote on that, is there a waiting period of 10 days or more for anybody to appeal it?
Yeah, it's a 20-day appeal.
20 days?
Yeah, once it's filed with the town clerk.
Okay. And how long does it take for it to be drafted and be voted on?
We'll probably do it at our next, next meeting.
We do it at the workshop or should we?
Is the workshop a public meeting?
Yep. It depends on if we have...
Probably could, that's when it gets started, sooner than later.
Before the snow starts flying, yes.
Our next regular meeting here as a board is... No, that's our working session.
August 4th.
August 4th.
August 4th. So that is one, two, three weeks and a couple days from tonight. Can you wait that long or do...
Well, is that when it will be voted on?
Yes.
What we could do is, couldn't we do it at the workshop? It's a public meeting.
We can drop the decision and have it ready for the 26th.
That would give them a, you know, a few days extra. We have another meeting on the 26th, which we could use to vote on that and that would start your...
The 20-day waiting period.
Yeah. You understand that you're able to, in the appeal period, if you want to take the risk, you're able to, if you're confident that there's gonna be no...
But it is a big risk compared to a roof mounted solar, we're gonna have quite a bit invested in the initial...
That would be your decision, correct?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
But we also need to have a building permit issued, which can't be issued until your voting is done as well.
It's true.
So we should be able to have that filed with the town clerk, summer 27.
The 27th?
So...
Is it 20 business days or calendar days?
Business days.
Business days.
You should be able to pick up that decision on the 17th of August.
Okay.
After the 20-day appeal period, you got the file by the...
That's only 15 days.
Okay.
If you go ahead, Sarah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we can move on to our next agenda item of 98 Myrtle Street, but we do have to open that hearing. Yep. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 48 and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section D 2 C 10 that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 12, 2016 at 7:15 in room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. for Greg Lacazette relative to a special permit application to allow ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system accessory to a residential building at 98 Myrtle Street. The site is located in the R3 zoning district, reference Assessor's Map 9, Block 36, Lot 1. Applications and materials are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours on 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. Are you here?
I am, yeah.
Do you guys hear that?
Yeah.
Get one!
Hi, I'm Sarah with Pretty Solar. So I'm here on 98 Myrtle Street, proposing that 28 panel ground mount, corner of the property. Do you need the setbacks? I... So it's 28 panels, it meets the setbacks on the east property line by, with 29 feet and 36 feet from the north property line. Looks like there's tree cover from all sides. I don't believe it would be visible from the street or any neighbors.
What's behind the field, ma'am?
What was that?
Just what's, what is behind the solar field?
It's just a bunch of trees from what I can see.
Is there a butter behind there or just...
No, there is...
This is the area that's under construction?
There's nobody to the north, there's a neighbor to the east with...
Is your property where it's going?
Probably about 50 feet of trees in between.
The house is here.
It's an old street?
And it's gonna be back here.
This is the lettuce property.
It's a property there.
Right. Is this one of those lots?
No.
You can see on my phone.
Ray, what's, what's the setback requirement? Where is this 25 foot? From any, from any boundary?
Yes.
It's really hard to kinda see what's... So this is forest? These are trees here?
It's a developed lot.
Yeah. And then... So this here...
So this is going behind where the pool is?
Yeah, there's a trench going basically from the house to the grandma in between, the trench goes in between the pool and garage diagonally to the back northeast corner of the property.
Is that a garage or shed in the way back?
In the back, I think that's a shed. The garage is right next to the house.
A big shed.
Yeah.
You have a big tractor?
Is there a property here?
Yeah, actually I would think it's a barn. It's a barn.
John, if you, if you look at this little diagram here, you can show where the adjacent houses are.
Yeah, that's vacant. This is a house right here.
So the only thing is protected is this one here then?
This, this would be here, this is vacant here.
This is, there's the house, this is the pool, the town board, the宅屋, there's a house here. There's nothing right now.
The house located on, I mean the property located on the Myrtle, what's the name of that street?
Medway.
Medway? Is that vacant?
The property directly to the east?
Yeah, on Medway Street.
Right, to this property, yeah.
So that would be...
And they're not, they're not closing any trees.
There's...
This is nice Google Maps, there's a property in here.
It, it looks like there's a house there, but it also looks like it's about 50 feet of trees between each.
Okay, so there's quite a few trees.
Yeah, I have another photo here if it helps at all.
Even though there's a lot of papers now development on it right now.
Right, at the moment, sure. As long as it meets the setbacks.
Yes.
Should be okay. Yep.
Did you wanna see this, John? It's helpful.
So here's the property. That's the house.
That's great, yeah.
It's the pool and the shed and the town board going daily and putting their hurry out here. So here's the closest neighbor. And this, although it's a lot, there's no development, okay.
His whole buffer zone is all heavily wooded, so they should be fine with our shrubs.
Right.
Yep. Thank you, Ray, that was helpful.
I should've brought my iPad.
Yeah, we could've done this on Apple TV. Yeah, it looks like the only issue and it really falls under our electrical code, but we like to mention it to folks, is the fence that's required around the array itself and that's for a safety reasoning. And I believe it's a, what, six, six-foot chain link? Four-foot?
Four-foot chain link.
Four-foot chain link? Ray, do you remember the fence requirements? If it's four or six feet?
The height, is it four feet, six feet?
I don't know, I, all I know is that it was...
Was it our, that guidance that he gave us?
John says it was, he recalls it being four feet. Actually, the first one that was up on Cape Cod Estates, the Talls had a four-foot one, that was the first one that we actually just put it in.
Yep.
And then otherwise, we typically look at things like buffer blocking views from neighbors, but it looks like because of the location and location of other neighbors that that doesn't seem to be an issue in this application.
Okay, for the fence, is it just getting the specifics from the wiring inspector about the location and height and exactly what needs to happen there?
Yeah.
Part of the building, building application that you'll, you'll submit will require that you have fencing.
Yeah, and the inspector can certainly walk you through what he'd like to see, yes.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else on this?
Uh, no. And the panels are oriented to the south, right?
Yes, they are.
Nope.
I don't know if south is...
Yeah.
Okay, so we can close this hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing for 98 Myrtle Street. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll, just like the previous one, we'll write up a decision and there's no reason why we can't review them both quickly on the 26th.
26th?
And the decision would be signed and ready for the appeal process starting the 27th.
Okay, so if it's signed on the 26th, after the 27th, you said, what happens after that?
You have a 20-day appeal period?
Okay.
And then you can start construction or get your building permit after the 20-day appeal period's up, which, Betsy, what was that date? August something?
17th, I think.
17th, as I remember, but...
17th, and that decision will have to be picked up from the town clerk's office, the original, and filed with the registry of deeds and debt.
And then do you get something from the registry of deeds to bring back to get the building permit?
Yeah, they'll give you a receipt showing the filing. We'll need to bring that back to us.
Okay.
We've said, you have a contact, is there any contact information for you? Cause I can send you...
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I have Lori, Lori, I think.
Yeah, that's in our other office, I can give you my contact information.
That, that would be great.
Sure, you can just get that on my way out.
That we there was, I never thought this was a public hearing. The town clerk, I can send you a copy, you know, to break down.
Yeah, that would be great.
Any response from Joey?
But we never opened, but we never opened that, because this is the first night for that public hearing, isn't it? We were just gonna open it tonight.
So we would just open it and then continue?
Do we have to open it?
Yes.
Yeah.
We do, still have to open it?
Yeah, yeah, because it was noticed.
I see.
The public would show up and wanna know what's going on.
So I need to read that still for 29 Valley?
It's gonna be...
Yeah, we have to wait till 7:30.
Are you getting ready to read?
I have to dig it out of my pile of papers here, it might take me three minutes. Too many pieces of paper.
Stop without you, John.
So I still need to read this whole thing?
Yes.
Yeah, wow.
Okay.
You guys are gonna get sick of hearing me tonight. Like a bedtime story. You'll be ready to crawl right into bed when you get home.
Great, awesome, all the new contacts. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you.
Should we review the meeting minutes since we have a couple minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
We could. I did, I read them before we came in, they look good to me.
Walter had a couple comments, I've made those changes. Good call on the vice chair too, by the way.
Are they canceled?
I believe it's going to be continued.
Yeah, they've asked, asked for continuance of the next meeting, which I think is gonna be August 4th.
But that's opposed to lot 10, John, is right?
No, lot 10 was already approved a while ago, so it's just lot 3.
Okay.
The one at the corner of Hill and Valley.
But it didn't say that on the, on the notice you got.
It didn't say what?
It said lot 2 and 3.
No, it said lot 3.
Oh, lot 2 and 3, sorry.
Lot 2 has already been approved, so...
It says lots, well, it says lots 1 and 8.
That's the one you got?
No.
Yes.
No.
It is.
So the one we got, said that lot 3 was being cleared.
That did not come from us. There's nothing about, yeah, they had that, that's why I got...
I wonder what you got?
Huh?
I wonder what you got?
I'll go home and get it now.
Yeah.
That's what I'm worried.
Yep.
That's the reason I came, because it said lot 3, it said lot 2, and then lot 3 was gonna be cleared.
I don't know what you got, but it didn't come from this office.
It was a notice from the town.
Not from this office.
Not from Betsy. Betsy would've sent the notice out.
Yeah, it would've been that exact notice.
That's why I came today, because I thought, well, I'm gonna be...
Yeah, I was wondering what you were saying, something about clearing.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
She had August 4th.
Is it possible they're starting to clear lot 2 and they were sending out notification?
We were waiting for you.
Walter, your mic is live. They're all live. I mean, I... Oh, yeah, I don't know why. This is reverberating.
Mine is too, though.
Wait, maybe it's too close to them. No, I think...
Can we ask if this is our...
She turned the volume down a little bit. Didn't that be her?
Hi.
How you doing, I missed anything?
You missed everything.
We just, just had two hearings on, on the solar panels.
Oh, okay.
Closed, both of them with intent to, intend to sign the favorable decision on both at the working session on August 26th.
Yes, okay.
All right, so do we wanna quickly do the meeting minutes? Wanna make a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them. Meeting minutes from, when was the last meeting?
Tuesday, June 14.
Tuesday, June 14.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, let us get to our last public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 48 and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section F 11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 12, 2016 at 7:30 p.m. in room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. regarding a site plan application for property located at 29 Valley Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, 29 Valley Realty Trust of Walpole, Massachusetts, is proposing to construct two duplex-style residential buildings with associated utilities and grading on proposed lot 3 as depicted on provided plans. The property is located in the C 1D zoning district, reference Assessor's Map 26, Block 80, lots 1 and 8. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to allow the construction of residential dwellings in a C 1D zoning district as specified in J 7A 2E of the Norfolk zoning bylaws. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours. All right, now can we have a motion to continue?
Before we do, Ray, have both of these attached memos here, one from you and one from Beta, been forwarded to them?
Yes.
Okay. I move to continue the public hearing for 29 Valis, Valley Street, Lot 3 until August 4th at...
I'm saying 7...
7:00 p.m.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ta-da.
Any record?
Sorry, I have nothing.
Anybody else have any new business?
Motion to adjourn?
Just a reminder, about two weeks, and we already know in two weeks is gonna be our working session. What we did is we had two decisions that we agreed we'll review at the 26th meeting, just to catch you up, Greg. So in addition to the working session, we'll just take 15 minutes at the beginning of those, and they're both for the ground-mounted solar arrays. So Betsy and Ray will draft up those decisions, maybe get them out to us before the 26th if you could.
Yeah.
So we'll just get through that quickly.
Remember, oh, for the working session, remember two months ago, three months ago, design review board came in with a proposed change to one of the zoning bylaws?
Yep.
Okay.
Still have my list of zoning stuff.
Yeah, and we're gonna move beyond the trees to whatever was next on your list of priorities. We'll move on to that for our next meeting.
That'd be great.
And what did we decide, did we decide what we're doing about the trees and shrubs? Is that, is there a plan to revise that or modify it or...
I thought the plan was to modify it, to add a little bit more detail as to like planting locations and what's good there, so that someone reading it has a little bit more information to draw from.
Yeah, we talked about sort of combining the idea of good locations for things along with diversifying the list a little bit.
Yeah, I remember that, I just wasn't sure what the process, are you gonna do that or do you want help or do you want...
I always take help, I've never seen no help.
I mean, I, if, you know, I'm happy to look it over and help if you, if you need to, yeah.
We want things that are indigenous and available.
Oh, yeah.
Then we also talked about, yeah, sort of creating that performance set.
I heard that pretty loud and clear.
Yeah, it is lasting.
Yep.
Normally indigenous trees are lasting anyway better than normal.
I think we were gonna footnote the ones that were susceptible to the invasive species.
Yeah, at this time.
Or even take them off the list or, I don't know.
Right.
That was one of the decisions, whether we're gonna footnote it or just kinda ignore them.
I think footnote's good because as time goes on and those pests go away and new ones come in, that, those footnotes might change and move around.
That's right.
And some of those trees are really great trees, we would welcome back.
Yes, I'll take your help.
Oh, okay. This, I just didn't know if it was like your, your responsibility to make all these changes ultimately, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody wants to keep jumping, Walter, a lot of times I'll kick things over to Walter Hill, review it, and give me his two cents, and that's how much appreciated.
Cool, okay.
Anytime anybody wants to pitch in, I'm going to say no.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, so I heard a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, all right, we're all done.